Let us pray. Father, we just thank you for this day and all you do for us. Lord, I just thank you for this city and I thank you for the people that we represent, people who are fortunate to serve. I just pray, God, that you would just be with the families and those of our community and wouldn't guide us in all that we do and all that we say as we take up the issues of the city tonight, in Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Thank you very much for being here. Uh, let's get the meeting going and we're gonna start with citizen participation. I'd like to open it up.
It's so steady.
Oh, sorry. Excellent. Like to open it up for citizen participation. Anyone here wishing to speak to something not on the agenda, please approach this podium, state your name, and we will go from there.
I think this is the time that I'm supposed to say.
It is, in fact.
Say something?
Welcome.
I guess, and that's probably for all those viewers back home. So, we had presented this resolution to the mayor, um, last Saturday at Pumpkin Days. It was a little rainy at that time. It was suggested maybe we do it again this Tuesday at today's city council meeting. I, as a true politician, never wanna give an opportunity up for a photo, so, here we are, to present the resolution again, uh, and I'll just read it to you. It's actually a pretty neat resolution from the Missouri House of Representatives. Whereas, the members of the Missouri House of Representatives always welcome the opportunity to acknowledge milestone events in the histories of show me state communities that have proven down through the years to be exemplary places in which to live, work, and raise families. And whereas, the City of Republic, Missouri, will commemorate the one hundred fiftieth anniversary of its founding with a special celebration during the Republic Pumpkin Days to be held on October second, twenty twenty-one, at J.R. Martin Park. And whereas, prior to the Civil War, early settlement in southwest Green County, Missouri, centered on the small village of Little York, but when the New Atlantic and Pacific Railroad, later called the Frisco Railroad, built a line through the area in the early eighteen-seventies, settlers decided to move two miles to the east along the rail lines route and named their new settlement Brookline. And whereas, following the war, a depot for the railroad was built southwest of Brookline and on October tenth, eighteen seventy-one, this area was officially chartered as Republic. Little York was replaced by Brookline and Republic and Brookline quickly absorbed the country trade, becoming an important point for people traveling and for farmers and local industries needing to ship and receive goods. And whereas, the City of Republic quickly grew from eighty-one people in eighteen eighty to more than eight hundred and fifty in nineteen, nineteen hundred, see if we can accomplish those kinds of numbers, uh, to eight thousand four hundred and thirty-eight in two thousand. And in two thousand and five, the cities of Republic and Brookline consolidated and the population grew to an outstanding, uh, an astounding eighteen thousand by twenty nineteen, making it the second largest, this was before the census data, uh, making it the second largest community in Green County and the perfect size to attract new industries and businesses. And whereas, today freight trains still zip through Republic by the hour linking the ports of California in the southeastern United States or reminding residents of how their community began and how they are rolling into the future with excitement. And whereas, it is fitting and proper that the Missouri House of Representatives should pause in its diverse legislative duties in order to acknowledge such outstanding occasions as this esquentennial anniversary of the incorporation of the City of Republic, Missouri. I was really nervous about that line. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Missouri House of Representatives, one hundred first General Assembly, join in extending our most heartily congratulations to the leaders and residents of the City of Republic upon this very special anniversary event. And be it further resolved that the Chief Clerk of the Missouri House of Representatives be instructed to prepare a properly inscribed copy of this resolution for the City of Republic, Missouri. So, this is a copy. There's also a copy of the resolution up in the chamber, so.
Excellent. Well, we don't wanna cheat you out of your picture, so.
Oh, yes, right. I would, I would've forgotten. I'm not that good at doing this. I would've looked it up online or something.
So, where do we want, have we done pictures of the first, where do you want?
Not there.
That sounds good.
Yeah, I would say probably in front of the, I don't know.
We've done it in the, what, the area?
Yeah, let's do it. Can I usher you out?
Can I ask my lawyer if it's okay for the lead?
Do we, we have, no, we have security here. We, we, your, 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 your security, your security team must follow you.
This is a, this is a really uppity exclusive activity, so we're gonna have.
We're gonna have to figure that one out. Let's get a little R, like, somewhere.
Like, right behind you?
No, that would include us. I think like the R.
Anything else we wanna discuss while the mayor's out? Take on issues of the city?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, he'll be back in. Levity does not belong in, in my chair. Sorry, I didn't, should've qualified it. Damon, you gotta tell me to be quiet.
Strictly speaking, we're on a recess.
I feel like we should sell commercials, like, during this time, man.
Jeopardy thing, we could do that. That was actually going through my.
Laura, this changes our completion time.
It does. I added about ten to it.
Chris promised we'd be out in forty-five, so.
I'm wondering where he got his information from.
Yeah.
Oh, I gave credit where credit is due.
Yeah, he did.
Thank you. Somebody forgot the camera. We got it.
Chief, I'm starting to get worried, buddy. I'm, I'm wondering.
Maybe they didn't need security.
Claude, stand up. Please, for the record, let it reflect that they have re-entered the chamber.
Guys, let me tell you, you missed out. You missed out.
You had to go outside for the natural.
I didn't think that one through. All right. Bishop, you took up everybody's citizen participation time. No, I'm joking. Uh, thank you very much, Representative. We really appreciate your support here and we appreciate your support in Jefferson City. Moving on, is there anyone else here for citizen participation that does not want photos? Please, sir, would you approach the podium, state your name and address, and then tell us what you're here for?
Uh, my name is Ralph Beelitz. I live at fourteen sixty-six South Natchez Avenue in Shula Ridge. And I'm here, uh, I had, I, I, you may not remember, I was a little late for the last meeting.
I do.
But, uh, I had a little confrontation with a neighbor that decided to cut his grass at six-thirty in the morning. And it turned out, uh, I was the bad guy because I did cuss at him, so. But, uh, I don't see that we have an ordinance around here for doing things like that. I mean, we got a quiet neighborhood. He's the only person I've ever seen or heard do that in three years that I've lived here. And the paperwork they gave me, Mr. Self and, uh, who was the other guy? There was another man from here. They, they gave me some regulations, but it really, there's no, there's nothing definite about, uh, uh, noise at that ti- time in the morning. I mean, uh, I don't know about you guys, but I think that's a little ridiculous. Uh, not only that, now they're building on both sides of me, and this hasn't bothered me yet, but I'm hearing bulldozers over there at, uh, long before seven o'clock in the morning. And I, I just think this is crazy. I mean, let people sleep, you know?
Right.
I'm usually awake, but my wife isn't, and, uh, uh, that's one of my complaints. The other thing is, uh, our street is like a drag strip. It's just a straight downhill shot. And I think we need a, a, a sign or a speed bump or something there. I think the traffic has slowed down a little since they opened up the street coming off that new development from Lynn Street. A lot of people are coming in the lower route instead of coming down our street. But Apodomix has a sign, you know, thirty miles an hour, but we have no sign. We have nothing there, and, uh, I think something could be done about that, but, uh, that's about it. Am I supposed to sign this? I noticed, oh, you guys knew his name, but I never heard him announce it.
Yep. Sir, I wanna thank you very much for coming in and talking about these issues. We always appreciate when citizens come in and talk about it. I do wanna let you know, I, I've heard what you've said about the no, noise ordinance potentially and about a speed issue, and we will look into that, and we appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
All right, no problem. I mean, I, I hope you can do something.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any other citizens here wishing to speak to anything not on the agenda?
No.
You're on the agenda.
I am on the agenda, okay.
My understanding is we're gonna talk with you and number eight, so.
Oh, okay.
That's okay. Anything else? Seeing nothing else about not being on the agenda, I'm gonna close citizen participation. And we are gonna move on to the consent agenda. Please note that the consent agenda carries four items on it, one, two, three, and four. Um, if you have any questions about anything specific, please know that you can speak up and ask. These consent agendas sometimes are small, sometimes large. It's medium tonight. I need a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda unless there's a question or a consent.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Moving on to boards, commissions, and committee schedules. Normally, I read these off, but I understand there's a, there's a change that maybe I'm not in, involved in or know about yet, so I'm gonna have Laura explain it.
Um, first, the Board of Adjustment meeting is canceled. Planning and zoning is scheduled for October twelfth, and city council is scheduled for October nineteenth. You'll see on the agenda that the budget workshop was initially scheduled for October twenty-sixth. That is being moved to November fourth. Mr. Keeling spent a lot of time working on the budget. He's gonna be out of the office on the twenty-sixth, so we wanted to have an opportunity for him to present. And then, um, to make that arrangement, we will be canceling November second and having the first readings for November, November sixteenth, and second readings November thirtieth.
Laura, will you send out an email about that?
I will do that.
Perfect, thank you. All right. Any questions or concerns about the upcoming board meetings? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to old business, item number five on the agenda. Uh, I understand there is a request from staff to table this item, is that correct?
Correct.
Do we know when we're going to wanna bring it up?
We are hoping on the nineteenth, the final completion of the letter service.
October nineteenth?
So, Mr. Mayor, what I would recommend is I would recommend that the motion be to table to a specific date as the notification, so we will need to just go ahead and make that into motion.
Absolutely. So, I would entertain a motion to table this until October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, at the council meeting then. I'd entertain a motion and a second for that.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to table till October nineteenth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Good?
Yeah, we're good.
Perfect. Moving on to item number six on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill twenty-one dash sixty-one by title only.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Motion carries five, zero to one. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, approving amending the zoning code an official map by changing the classification of approximately four-point-seven-seven acres from medium-density, single-family residential, R-one M, to general commercial, C-two, located at five-oh-three Northwest Avenue.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, staff was here last time presented to council. Any updates from staff? Any questions or comments or discussion from council? Seeing none, I need a motion and a second for a final passage of Bill twenty-one dash sixty-one.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers.
I know, it's not there.
Motion passes five to zero to one. Moving on to item number seven on our agenda, this is, uh, twenty-one dash sixty-two. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill twenty-one dash sixty-two by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, approving entry of an abatement order on consent with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources regarding wastewater treatment and authorizing the execution of same by the mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Staff presented on this at the last meeting, uh, any updates or comments from staff?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
So, I wanna comment, if there's any questions regarding the abatement order, it's pretty, I don't wanna call it cut and dried, it's anything but cut and dried. It's, uh, just a quick overview again, uh, in twenty-eleven, the city was issued, uh, for failure to, or struggling with having stormwater flowing out of their wastewater plant into the stream, uh, they were given a five-year timeline to abate that situation. Obviously, they didn't make it in twenty sixteen, we extended it, so just to renew that. So, in doing so, we negotiated an agreement, as you have there before you, to address the need, uh, but we've also been working with our consulting engineers since two thousand seventeen about the growth and development of the city. During our meeting with the, the, uh, engineering team last week, Andrew, myself, Karen, uh, our engineer, I'm missing somebody, Jason Davis, our water operations supervisor, so we, when we attended the meeting, the cost of the construction has gone substantially higher, uh, for what we're gonna end up having to do in the future, and that has nothing to do with meeting compliance. So, the compliance schedule is on target, so I will tell you that we will start construction in January. The cost of the construction of the wastewater plant will grow exponentially due to our growth overall, and so it has no impact on this consent order because we actually have to do this. So, we will meet this consent order, but I want you to know the discussion about the wastewater plant is just beginning. We met with Representative Davison, uh, Friday, immediately following that meeting because we were contacted by the state about potential opportunities to, the state has about three-point-one, three-point-two billion dollars in ARPA funds that are designated specifically for wastewater, so those thing, those, that guidance just came out. And, uh, so basically, what we'll be doing is working with Representative Davison, we'll be working with, uh, other of our elected officials because that is a state-managed fund, and so, uh, they're looking for ways to spend that by twenty twenty-six. This is in addition to our funds. So, DNR had reached out, was there any projects that were construction-ready? We actually qualify for construction-ready, we actually have the designs for the options. So, the beauty of what, by planning for this in twenty seventeen, like we did, having them ready, this is very much one of those projects because it could have a detrimental impact to the social dynamics of our community for costing more money, it could affect our economic development, and it addresses an environmental component that's being imposed by the federal government. So, I'm not gonna go into great detail what that is tonight, I just want you to be aware that those discussions continue to evolve, but you will not be going to jail.
Thank you. That was a major concern.
But there are a number of things that we're gonna have to address and improve, uh, overall, to address the growth and development of our community and also to meet, uh, a few more restrictive guidelines when it comes to nutrients that were not being discussed prior to, um, that measure, so that's all I wanted to update unless you wanna add anything to it. Did I cover it?
Great, you did a great job.
Let a water guy explain it.
Questions from council, given that information? Okay. So, I need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill twenty-one dash sixty-two.
Motion.
Second.
We've got, we've got a motion and a second. We are now going to take a roll call vote on your computers. Please click Refresh, cast your vote, hit Submit. And we'll see if I have to sign something.
Mayor, I, I'll leave it alone.
I'm already nervous enough. I have to sign something. Motion carries six, zero. Moving on to new business, this is item number eight on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill twenty-one dash sixty-three by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, approving the final plot of Monte Cristo Phase Ten subdivision.
Thank you, ma'am. Hey.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm great, how about you?
I'm doing really well, thank you. Would you like to talk?
I would, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the final plot of Monte Cristo Ten will legally subdivide approximately fifteen-point-five acres of land into forty residential lots. It does include the dedication of right-of-way utility and stormwater easements. The final plot includes approximately three thousand two hundred and fifty-three linear feet of street, three thousand, uh, six hundred and seventy-four linear feet of sidewalk. Um, the final plot does, uh, meet compliance with the original preliminary plot approved back in two thousand and six. Staff and the TRT has reviewed the final plot, and we are recommending approval.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions from council? Seeing none, I will now open it up to citizen comment for anyone concerned in the community. This is your turn. My pleasure. Would you please state your name and your address?
I am Gail Saunders. I live at six-thirty-one West Melody Lane.
Excellent.
Right across the street.
Tell us what you think.
Okay. First of all, I hope you have a paper in front of you that's, I read a wonderful book. It told me that we need to be concerned about trees. So, I took a drive through our lovely neighborhood and around the town, and I have found out that Sonic has put out some nice trees, uh, Andy's has put out some nice trees, Amazon, wonderful trees. Then I drive on Grace Street through Monte Cristo, on Madrid Street through Monte Cristo. I even drove through Old Savannah. I am finding that, uh, there's not a tree on some of these residential lots that are in our very new subdivisions. Okay, I know that from the late sixties, we have required a tree on every residential lot here in Republic. I am concerned that, uh, the developers are not taking care of the trees that they are planting to the point that they survive. If Amazon can keep their trees alive, if Sonic can keep their trees alive, why can't our developers keep their trees alive long enough to sell the lot and have families living in these houses? Um, the three hundred block of West Madrid Street has thirty-two houses. There are twelve of those houses on that one block that do not have trees, and those houses have been there at least year and a half, two years, maybe three. I mean, these are mainly rental houses. Somebody let those trees die. I would like the council to perhaps come up with an ordinance that makes the tree requirement last longer than the inspection. Please consider this.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate your time, appreciate you coming in and speaking. Please remember, this is a first read, so if you have any questions, please get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to item number nine on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill twenty-one dash sixty-four by title only, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
Sorry, my computer froze up. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, amending Title One Government Code, Chapter One Ten, Administrative Policies, Article Eight, Authority to Enter Into Contracts Policy, and Chapter One Twenty, City Officers and Employees, Article Four, Miscellaneous Provisions.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there staff that's going to cover this?
Do you wanna cover that and if they have questions on the other?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, there are two provisions in Chapter One Hundred which we are proposing changes to this evening. The first is in Section One Ten dash Two Hundred, this is persons authorized to enter into contract on behalf of the city. We are changing this from the twenty-five thousand dollar limit that is currently in the ordinance to meet the purchasing policy, allowing the city administrator to enter into a contract up to the fifty thousand dollar value. The second change is in Section One Twenty dash One Forty, uh, this is acceptance of easements. We are also proposing the, uh, bill's administrator or their designee be allowed to also accept deficient right-of-way in addition to easements. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I don't know what deficient right-of-way is.
That is such a good question.
Right.
Yes, okay, so, a lot of times, um, when a plot is not involved, we'll have a, um, a designated road going through a piece of property, and during the development process, which may not include a plot, we have an opportunity to, um, get deficient right-of-way. So, if a roadway is designated, say, as a, uh, local street, the typical right-of-way required is fifty feet. We measure from the center line. In some instances, that property line may only be, say, um, fifteen feet from the center line, so there's an opportunity then, at the point of development, to obtain that other ten feet, which we would, would then refer to basically as deficient right-of-way.
Have we done that recently? Is there an example, like a real-life example?
There is a real-life example, yes. Um, we did have a, uh, development just recently. It was on, um, a, a road designated on our major thoroughfare plan, um, which, uh, there was significant, um, right-of-way that was needed. So, basically, at some point in the future, if the city chooses, they may expand that roadway, meaning that we need, instead of forty feet that currently existed, we need the entire seventy. So, that was an opportunity to negotiate with the developer, um, for him to basically give us the right-of-way.
Okay. Questions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
So, what we can do, just to, to illustrate this at the next read, we can demonstrate what that is, just so you can understand what a plot is and what that, what that deficient right-of-way is, 'cause I can understand why that could be confusing, but we could, we can provide an example of what that looks like in an illustration.
A recent, like, real-life example would be the development along MN Highway, the M two building that went through, uh, a lot of those old homes along MN Highway, the property lines are almost right up against the pavement, so we know we're gonna build a five-point highway there, so we expanded the right-of-way after accommodate that highway there. But that road, MN itself, is not actually in the development that we're just being considered, so it's not in the plot.
Got it.
This is just another mechanism kind of in our tool belt, um, when something doesn't fit neatly into a plotting situation.
Okay. Questions, concerns? Excellent. Uh, please remember, this is a first read, so if you have any questions, get with staff before the next meeting. Looking forward to the, uh.
Illustration?
Cartoon. I was gonna say cartoon, but illustration, yeah.
If I can do the Hancock meme, they can do, uh.
Fair. Uh, item number ten on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill twenty-one dash sixty-five by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with Missouri Department of Social Services, Family Support Division regarding the low-income housing, or low-income household water assistance program.
Thank you, ma'am. Hi.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Welcome back.
Thank you. Very much appreciated. Uh, good evening. We are bringing before you this ordinance to enter into an agreement with, um, DSS for a program of assistance for our citizens. Um, this will assist our citizens with services and delinquencies up to seven hundred and fifty dollars should they be eligible. This program is available until, uh, September twenty, or thirtieth, sorry, of twenty twenty-three, or until all funds are spent at the state level.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any questions?
Mr. Franklin?
How many people are eligible for this currently, or do, are we aware percentage wise?
I'm not real sure, it's based on household size and their monthly income amounts. So um they said that they would actually take it upon themselves to reach out to the eligible citizens and um work with us as the city, which is where this agreement comes into play.
So they, they actually have to apply for this assistance, okay.
Thank you.
Do they get to use it monthly, like it's consistent throughout twenty twenty-three?
No, I think it's just to help with the arrears that people have, it's just another assistance program that's out there, I think probably opened up due to COVID, I'm not real sure. But um it's just to help them during these times that, you know, shut off processes are being started back up and all that.
All right, please remember this is a first read, so if you have any questions, get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to other business, specifically resolutions, item number eleven. This is twenty-one dash R dash forty-six, a resolution of the city council of the city of Republic Missouri authorizing the police and fire departments to utilize CARES Act reimbursement funds allocated by Green County, Missouri. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution twenty-one dash R dash forty-six.
Motion.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Chief?
Hello.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you mayor. Uh, we recently learned that the Green County Commission had approved our department to receive approximately two hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents from the CARES Act Relief Fund. Knowing this, I'm being specific. Uh, knowing this was a one-time payment, uh, we decided that we would identify eight projects that we wanted to complete with the funds. So we are requesting approval to utilize the funds for the projects outlined in the uh table I believe you guys have. And also I believe the fire department's included in this and if I correct, they got about nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars to utilize as well from the CARES Act fund, so.
Thank you sir, do we have questions from council?
Mr., oh, go ahead, Mr. Franklin.
Was this the money that we had already approved prior in the?
No, that would be ARPA funds.
That was an ARPA fund.
This is a, this had a different level of opportunity that we could utilize it specifically for police and fire. The question I had was why this discrepancy was so much bigger for fire that had more, just as much contact. You got nine thousand, PD got two hundred, or two hundred and eleven thousand. Any idea?
I don't, and transparency, I know that I reached out and I believe Megan did as well. We reached out to the county because they had asked us for specific data for the police department. We asked if the fire department could be included in that as well and we were told no, that they had already taken care of the fire department prior to law enforcement, so.
Just interesting.
I don't know if their formula was different and our chief may know.
I have no idea, but ours is mostly going to cover the overtime expenses we incur. We lost about one-third of the fire department at one point in time to COVID or quarantine due to COVID.
Yeah, I'm just curious why the allocations are so different, anyway.
But we don't, we don't have an answer.
We don't. That's why, I was curious what that was.
All right, questions from council? Seeing none, and as this is a resolution, we can move immediately to a vote if there are no other questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries, six to zero. Moving on to item number twelve on our agenda, this is Resolution twenty-one dash R dash forty-seven. A resolution of the city council of the city of Republic Missouri determining the intent of the city of Republic Missouri to reimburse itself for certain capital expenditures in connection with the acquisition, construction and equipping of a public works facility. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution twenty-one dash R dash forty-seven.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Hey.
Hello.
What you got?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, this resolution would allow the builds department to reimburse expenditures we're incurring for the facilitation of our facility from the debt that we're taking out, so it's a process to go get a loan to build our building, but we're going to go ahead and get our project moving forward, so we're using either reserve funds or funds that we would allocate to other projects. This would allow us to reimburse us for, for those expenses to the building.
Questions from council?
Do you know the timeline, Andrew, of when reimbursement would take place?
What, um, that's a great question. So, yeah.
We lost our loan.
The answer's, the answer's no, um, we're working on the financing side of it still. Um, and then on the actual construction side of it, and, and everybody's facing these challenges, you know, we, we ordered the building itself, so it's a pre-manufactured engineered building, we're, we're like a year, a little better than a year out just from receiving it, so um, those supply shortages are, are a challenge. But to answer your question.
No, okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
So just for some clarity sake, you will see, you'll start to see more and more of these resolutions as we begin to evaluate the park system. Uh, expanding capital expenditure, so as we're spending money now to work on those projects utilizing cash. You have to pass these resolutions if you're issuing debt of any kind so that you can recover it. If we go out and spend a bunch of money on engineering that we're like, well, that was going to be in the loan, but because of construction delays. This is part of the thing that we would have done on the wastewater plant too, so you'll see very similar resolutions coming forward, like, why are we reimbursing ourselves? It's because if we don't have those resolutions with the bonding agencies, we cannot recover the funds when we're issuing bonds, so. This is the first step of a really good process that does not just bleed our cash position dry. If we can pay cash for it and we don't need to borrow it, we won't. So as you know, we pay down our debt, if we wanna, don't want to put it in the loan, we don't have to. So this just allows us to, if we want to, if our cash positions are strong, we don't even have to put it in the loan.
But this also keeps it very transparent.
Very much so.
So, so these bonds, if they are to be issued, this is basically a stopgap measure between paying out, paying out of pocket and the construction loan that comes in the future.
That's right.
Construction loans will pay off these bonds.
Yeah, so I mean, if we, yeah, yes, because historically you pay the engineering fees, like, we've been paying the engineering fees on the wastewater plant since two thousand and seventeen. Ideally, it'd have been fun to go back and say, have a resolution to go back and recover, but why pay interest and expense on something we had the cash to pay for? Once you start getting into the construction and you're ordering steel, or you're like, we probably need a resolution to make sure that that's not coming out of the general fund or the water wastewater fund to pay for it. And they need that for operations that could put you in a negative cash position, so yes.
Thank you.
Other questions from council? As this is a resolution, I'd like to move this immediately to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries, six to zero. That concludes that portion of the agenda, I'd like to move on to reports from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, I just want to make the announcement that the, the invitation you received to the dedication ceremony or the uh new gateway sign will be this Friday, October eighth at eleven o'clock. I want to thank again Jared, Jennifer for the work you all done to get the, the sign, the city utilities for the land acquisition or the donate, I wouldn't, can't call it donation, the lease that we've established. Uh, I want to make it very clear that we, we, we would love to have as many people as possible, but there is no parking on necessarily US sixty. There is a parking location at sixty-six twenty-five West US Highway sixty, where there'll be shuttle service, I believe, is the plan to the site, so. Still working with the governing agency on the highway system that allows us to have access, but that's more of a challenge. So again, thank you for the dedication to the sign, we've had a lot of feedback regarding the sign, mostly positive, significantly positive, and I thank you uh, the, the council, the, the citizens that voted for it, see you, Jared and, and Jennifer, great job. And so hopefully everybody can be out there, we're, we're not asking people to park on the highway, it's just going to be a dangerous situation, but I'm sure that there will be somehow, some way. Uh, speaking in MoDOT, so I believe on November fourth, um, the, I, we learned this last week that our six million dollars had been approved on widening MM, so that is an allocation that now goes to the commission for a vote. Andrew and I will be there, uh, at that event, as I, I think it was a month ago, I spoke to the highway commission. We will be there when that vote takes place, there is an open hearing potential in Kansas City where we can actually address the commission, so. Having that six million and Green County, uh, we're working on the, the agreement, what that called, I'm sorry, I forgot it.
IGA.
IGA, good lord, I didn't think I'd know it by heart, IGA, which is an intergovernmental agreement between us and Green County, which is for another one and a half million dollars, and so then we will be going to a loan agi, a loan, the state's loan bank. There's another fund that we can utilize, it'll help cover the cost of the entire construction, so I anticipate the widening of MM, at least the, not the construction, but the planning, the environmental, the right of way. Which will be an interesting topic because it is widening it from two lanes to five lanes, which involves property, and so there is property acquisition uh, along MM, so that will be uh, an interesting piece to have to navigate, as we know through when we're doing the building streets, but I want to thank the, the work that's been done, but hopefully by November fourth, we'll be able to come back and present the actual uh, uh, approval resolution from the commission. I um, let's see, I can't read my own stuff here. Oh, great job on Pumpkin Days, so Jared, I want to thank the Pumpkin Days Committee for allowing the work of the staff. A year ago, we started working on this, the, the, the Trust Edge book, talking about all the eight pillars of it, and the Parks Department picked, was it connection? So the connection pillar was to connect with different agencies in the community and Pumpkin Days was one of them, that they had worked very hard to foster a, a relationship to connect with them, to find a way to partner the Parks Department and Pumpkin Days without taking the event from them, but leveraging our park system to do those together. And so I want to thank Pumpkin Days for their willingness to do that, the committee, and for our team for connecting with that and finding ways outside. That's technically not the Parks and Recreation Department, but they said, let's look outside of our own and how can we build upon programming that we do, so it was really cool to see it Saturday morning to see our banner behind it on the stage, it actually had our logo plus the Pumpkin Days to show that collaboration to make that happen. But I think that that's just going to be a bigger and better event, and I thank you for your vision and the work that you guys always do, there's no event that you don't participate in. It's not first class and two to nines, and we did a presentation today at the chamber, and I do apologize in advance, I said this, this is probably not what you want to do. Is to give a presentation your council has never seen before, but it was more and more just about growth and development of the city, which a lot of it you have heard about. But with that, I'm looking forward to presenting in November, you see the, the work session for our budget. I am looking forward to having some discussion about the growth and development, the overall vision of the city in co, in coordination with the budget discussion on November fourth. And so we want to be very respectful of your time, but I do appreciate the, the chamber today, uh, Macy allowing us the opportunity to present the, the mission or the vision of the city, at least in fifteen minutes, it's something that's normally take about two hours, like, really drive into it, but to really showcase what's going on uh, in our community, the mayor was there, thank you for being able to attend, Jen was available to attend, as was the kids, so they were excited about the raffle, I think. They didn't win anything, even though by guilt or association they did.
They got a blanket.
Uh, good time was had by all, I want to thank, you know, our staff, Karen, Garrett Britner's not here tonight, um, the Jason, I keep forgetting, and Andrew, we went to Kansas City last week for two days. I was exhausted riding home, I'm not sure Andrew and I said maybe, maybe ten words to each other in the car, that's, I mean, and we talked the whole way up there, oh, we're going to do this, we're going can't wait for us to talk about this, and riding home it was, uh, we were tired, it was exhausting, and we're like, man, I'm not sure what we just saw. And so we, but I also want to thank Representative Davidson, because in the middle of that discussion, I contacted him and says, I need to meet with you first thing Friday morning to discuss these funds and this availability, and so he made time, uh, at eight thirty on Friday morning, Congressman Long, Long's office had already called. I say all that to say, we're working very hard on the future of this community, we don't just look at, yeah, it don't happen by nature. We work very hard to find a solution and path and work those things on your behalf. The mayor's been instru, I, I've, I've told him, prepare, be ready to leave, to go to Jeff City at any given moment, because that's exactly how we're willing to do this. We're willing to be at the right places, talking to the right elected officials to make that happen. And so, but again, talking about our, our vision today, Elisa, what a fabulous job you did to pull all that together. Respectfully, she's been here two weeks, this is the start of her third week. I promise you those that saw it, when you do get to see it, she had less than one hour personal FaceTime of any involvement for me to say this is what I, it was either by email, she's like, okay, does it always work this way? No, ma'am, it does not.
A little bit, a little bit though, a little bit.
But I thought what, I thought the work you and Chris, what you all did was nothing short, Elisa for helping getting that, pushing that information to me, but to be able to pull that together, it was a long night last night, early morning this morning, to prepare it, to say it. But really, the work you did to get that done was nothing short of phenomenal, I don't remember much of the presentation, and I was there. But I thought you did a fantastic job and looking forward to the work that we can do on a, I don't know if it's ever going to get slower, but it was just a uh uh, a great time and I appreciate everything that we're doing, I love this community, I love where we're going. The mayor and I, I will say, and it's, I don't want to steal his thunder, we did interview.
Yeah, go ahead.
That for, I'm going to try to make something up now. Four candidates, we interviewed, we interviewed four candidates, it's on Monday. Uh, yes, so.
For the Ward one.
For Ward one, and so anyway, hoping to uh get back together in three or four days and just to discuss that after the presentations and things that are going on, council agendas. Uh, we are a growing city, so as you know, we, we're anticipating twelve and a half percent growth over the next five years.
Per year.
Per year, so we're looking at possibly up to fourteen thousand more people, more, over forty-two thousand traffic counts a day. We are working actively, I will tell you, to figure out ways to constantly make it better, to improve quality of place and life outside, inside our community. And I just thank you for the privilege, I thank you for, I said this today, Mr. Mayor and to Mr. Esher before, you all have allowed us tremendous potential. Allow us to do our jobs, I don't think it's under, it's undervalued how freely we get to do our job without the involvement. I love the fact, I know some people saying, you probably don't hate me, see, you do this to me.
I do, go for it, go for it.
But I enjoy the fact that our mayor, you may not see a lot, you may not see a, a number of different things that are going on, but what we talk about, we meet. He's aware of these things, I can talk to him about them at any given time, he'll always say, David, how can I help you? Every single meeting, what do you need from me? And I see that from each and every one of you, that you allow us to do our job without interfering, and when I, when I say this to our community today, I made mention of it, said, if you want to know why we're growing and what really changed in Republic was the alignment has to start at the legislative body, the culture has to change in the community, and a combination of those things is what makes it happen. And so for us to sustain that, we have to have great leadership doing this, you have to continue in the capacity you are for a lot, whoopin' two hundred bucks a month, it's not a glam, I mean, to take those things, it's, it is a service, a, a labor of love to lead and guide this community. But it makes it easy for us when we're not sitting there navigating a lot of different difficult, I mean, we have difficult challenges interfacing our community. We're trying to address the heavy, heavy ones and we have a staff that take care of everything from a tree to noise, to whatever that is, we're not just going to ignore what those things are. But at the same time, is we have every detail when it comes to our groundbreaking, I have details on our financials, it's just like moments notice, but we're also talking about a hundred and fifty to two hundred million dollar uh, decisions facing the community. And like the mayor and I discussed in those discussions, I feel like our council deals with thirty million dollar decisions and allows the staff to deal with the thirty dollar decisions. And so I don't make disrespect to that, it's like that that's what you allow us to do. I think it gets overlooked and I probably need to do a better job of at least letting people see how that works, because if you watch it in different places, that might be a challenge, but at this level the mayor understands, he's a business owner, understands, go run the business, and I appreciate that, I know our staff appreciates that, and so uh, we appreciate the questions, so. With that, I know it's longer, but it took you longer to take pictures.
So this is punishment, is that what you're saying?
I'm blaming you for the over.
All right, that's fine, I'll take it this time because it's usually you. All right, sorry, I can't let somebody else get the last word in, that's an issue. Uh, council, any comments from council? Mr. Franklin?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, uh, I would just like to extend that thank you for Pumpkin Days, uh, it's truly, it was a great event. It's great to see people laughing, having fun, having a great time. We got a little bit damp, so I put a little damper on it, but uh, even with that there, it was a great day, so thank you to everyone involved in that, the planning, making sure that we were safe and that everyone had a great time, it was very much appreciated.
Anything else from council? David did steal my thunder, we did interview four very qualified individuals for city council, Ward one, open seat. We are going to sit down and talk about it at some point this week, we talk in text message, like, like, just call me, and it's, we will get it worked out. Because we would like to have a full body in here helping everybody out. With that, I think that's all I've got, excellent work.